Questions from any council members? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Move to approve Resolution 22-052.
Councilmember Corey?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 22-052. Any further discussion? Not, please vote. Six yes, motion carried. Okay, congratulations. Item C, council discussion on the 5:30 meeting times for the first council meeting of the month. Councilmember Duncan, your name's on that one.
The reason why I asked for this to be brought up under new business is for consistency. It is quite confusing at times to know when we need to be here at 5:30, when it needs to be here at 6:00. And I think that for consistency that we need to just have one time and be here at 6:00 regardless to, you know, our, to what's on our agenda. I think that we need to make sure that we pay attention to our agenda and make sure that things that are on our agenda is where it needs to be and, you know, maybe some things that are not on there can be moved to another day if it's too, you know, cumbersome for that one time. Another reason is that we recess every time we have the 5:30 time and it, and it means that we're, we're still wasting time, I think, just coming here at 5:30. It's just really hard to, to juggle the 5:30 and 6:30 time. So I would like for any other council member, if they have any other comments or how do they feel, because I don't know if we need to vote on this. Is this a thing that we vote on, but I think that, so, that, those are my comments.
All right, thank you. All right, it is a discussion item, so is there any, excuse me, let me switch back here. Okay, is there any other council members that would like to say anything? Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've been tracking what we've been doing when we come in at 5:30. January, we spent fourteen, we came in 30 minutes early and we conducted business for 14 minutes. February, we conducted business for 16 minutes. March, 20 minutes. April, May, and September were all 16 minutes. So roughly, we're coming in 30 minutes early to do 16 minutes work. I'm not sure that's the best use of our time, and I would suggest we not meet at 5:30 anymore. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else with any other opinions? Councilmember Corey?
I think Councilmember Rick and Duncan make a good point. We've never gone longer than 20 minutes, so, I mean, why not just keep it at 6:00? Have to start everything at one time, so it's just, you know, it's universal. That way, everybody can keep it straight.
Okay. Councilmember Estes?
I agree that the, the one time would help me immensely. When you're having to highlight it on the agenda so that we remember what time to come in, and I know we don't have to be here at 5:30, but it doesn't look good if we're not here. And I like to be here for the proclamation, so I would like a one consistent start time. And I'm with Councilmember Rick, I appreciate him keeping that, those statistics, that really does help us. And I don't think it's gonna, none of us are gonna behoove anybody wanting to take five minutes to get some pictures. I, I don't think that that's gonna be a problem.
Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I don't think we've had, it's very rare that we had enough that would have held us up any amount of time. And we can always adjust how many things we do have. So I think 6 o'clock works better.
Well, the reading the proclamations into perpetuity has really cut out a lot of the time that we normally have had for, and honestly, I, I don't, I think it's kinda silly. If we read it into perpetuity, I don't even think it needs to be on the agenda anymore. I just, unless they contact us and say they want to come, you know, it just feels kinda silly up here saying we've read X amount of proclamations into perpetuity. And I know we're gonna have some proclamations, and so we'll deal, deal with it when we do. All right, sounds good. Sounds like that's a decision of the council. All right, let's move on to item D. Resolution number 22-053, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado authorizing the leasing of two Mack trucks through KS State Bank and acquired with fiscal year 2022 budgeted funds. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm John Lewis, Finance Director for the City of Fountain. As you know, council adopted budget for 2022 on October 26th of 2021, and at that time, we included $143,000 in the Streets Department of the General Fund for snowplows and sanders and for the 2022 required lease payments. It was an estimate at that time for purchasing two snowplow trucks and then being reimbursed by a lease. The bids for the lease were received. KS State Bank came out with the lowest interest rate of 2.96% over a four-and-a-half-year period, and there would be a balloon payment at the end of that unless we determine to, if we determine to lease new vehicles. This is a request for your approval for a contract of signing the, the lease, so we would actually be increasing the expenditure budget by 382,488, and then we would be reimbursed for that amount through the lease. So with that, I'd like to ask for your approval to go ahead and purchase and lease these two trucks that will replace two trucks that are 15 to 20 years old and are currently costing the city quite a bit of money in maintenance, and at times they're, they break down right when we need them to plow the roads and, and take care of things. So I would ask that you approve Resolution 22-053.
Thank you very much. Like to do with this? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve Resolution 22-053.
Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Six yes, motion carried.
Thank you, Council.
All right, that takes us on to item 9E, Resolution number 22-054, a resolution authorizing the ordering of one 2023 Ford F-350 Type One diesel ambulance between the City of Fountain and Braun NW Incorporated. Chief Heber?
Ma'am, that's a resolution, and I'd like you to approve it. And I'm on the clock, so I'm prepared to step off stage left, unless you have any questions. It's in the budget. The resolution is no more than $420,000. It'll actually be less, it just gives us a little wiggle room as prices have adjusted. Most importantly, we know Braun, good company, it'll allow us to bring three operational ambulances, a backup, and then begin a process of rechassis in, in the future, which will save the citizens $200,000 per vehicle. It'll be good. So, any questions?
Mayor, I do have one point of clarification. It's not in the budget for 2022. It's, it's proposed in the budget for '23, but the problem is due to the length of time now ordering these kind of vehicles. We need to get it ordered now so we can get in the production, and it'll get paid for, it'll get delivered next year. But otherwise, if we wait, the price is actually getting ready to go up, and so we have this short window.
Yep.
Anyway, just wanted to make sure.
And we'll lease it to minimize the costs over the, over the years.
You're assuming we're going to throw it in your budget, huh?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I heard a yes.
And what is gonna happen to the 2017 ambulance?
So the 2017, we'll be able to begin the rechassis process.
Okay.
So it'll come out, and when its end of life is done, which it's nearing its end of life and in service now, we'll be able to take it, refurb it, rechassis it, and put it back into service.
Okay.
A much cheaper cost.
Yes, we've talked about that a lot before.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all righty. Okay, and so that rechassis will happen when this new one's here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Tendatively, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, barring the budget, that darn budget.
Barring, barring whatever happens in the end of 2023.
Okay. Councilmember Corey?
I was just gonna make a motion if we're, if we're ready.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Move to approve Resolution 22-054, authorizing the ordering of a new diesel ambulance.
Okay, Councilmember Applegate?
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution 22-054. Is there any further discussion? Any questions from the audience, anything? Nope? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Six yes, motion carried. All right, that takes us on to item 10, Correspondents' Comments and Ex officia Reports. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two quick items, and one of them, and they're both really related. We have the Trunk or Treat coming up on October 28th. Excuse me, I know some of you have participated by bringing some trunks and handing out candy. If that's something you're interested in doing, make sure you let us know so we can, we can get you in our loop. We're gonna, by the way, be moving off of Main Street, just from a safety standpoint, moving on to the back parking lot and on the south side of this, of City Hall, just to keep the kids away from the road and we're not having to do the shutdowns, but I think it's gonna be much safer for our folks. The other thing is, I also need, from time to time, some volunteers. So if, if you don't want to bring a trunk, but you do want to help volunteer, help parking vehicles and delivering candy, monitoring the, the bathroom in City Hall, those kind of things, just let me know that as well, because I'm always looking for volunteers. The other thing I wanted to make sure I mentioned that's tied to this is this Friday, right? This Friday's the 14th, I think, right? Yeah. We have a, I think it's kinda gonna be, it's gonna be fun. It's this Oh My Gourd event that, Joni, he came up with that name, that was pretty creative. We've got a gentleman, his name is Willie Tuz, he's actually at a Grand Junction, but he has, he's in the second season of Halloween Wars on the Food Network, and he, his specialty is carving pumpkins, and I guess that's what he's known for. So we've got a massive pumpkin carving that he's gonna be doing right out here in front of City Hall on the 14th, and we'll, we'll hopefully have that display up, well, until it starts falling apart. Hopefully, we'll be able to get it for a couple of weeks. That was Joni's idea, but we also got a lot of support from the Fountain Up event group, so that Sylvia's on that as well, and, and a number of our employees, and non-employees. So I think it's pretty exciting, I think it's gonna be kinda fun. If you, if you're around, stop by the front of City Hall and, and watch him carve that. And also, a big shout out to Wendigo. They, they, every year, they're a huge sponsor for that event, and they provide us, you know, a couple truckloads of candy, which help us, for everyone, we expect everyone who's coming to bring candy to bring a certain amount, because we can't supply everyone candy, but then we bring the amount that Wendigo provides us, and we go refill them as they, as they run out, because the, the price of candy to serve, you know, 3,000 kids is just way too much. It's pretty high. So we make sure that we have candy, we can restock people. But we've got a lot of folks coming out, a lot of different nonprofit groups we're really excited about, and, so I just encourage you to that. That's all I had.
Mayor, just a warning for everybody, if you haven't checked your email yet, please do regarding the bridge closure on 85, 87 tomorrow. The late notification that we got today, if you read between the lines, sounds like what happened is, we knew they were gonna be doing maintenance on the bridge, but it sounds like they probably found some things that were unexpected, so it turned in from just doing maintenance to a full closure. So they're closing that bridge from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM tomorrow. If you get any calls from anyone, we have, we have no impact on that, we have no communication to that, other than letting us know it's coming tomorrow. So we know it's gonna be a huge burden for the south end of the city, but that, along with the construction they're doing out on I-25 again, CDOT projects, and we have, we have no say-so in that, but it is gonna be a huge impact tomorrow.
I think part of my concern is not just the closing of the bridge tomorrow, which I know is gonna be a pain for one day, but the fact that probably about 4:30, 5 o'clock, they're gonna be closing Academy, so as people are looking for alternative routes to get home, they're gonna really, really be stuck. I think we're gonna have some really, really bad traffic impacts, so Chief, you really need to be aware of that. 85, Grinnell, Powers, Mark Shuffle, they're all gonna be a, a mess tomorrow. And, and the Academy evening closures are Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, but I think the worst day is going to be tomorrow, because it, hopefully, they'll get that bridge done by 4:00 o'clock and have it open, right? And then, then try to get up to the other side of the freeway, which is, you know, over on Charter Oak is just really a mess, too, so.
My recommendation, avoid both.
South Academy, South Academy, and then the little one right down here at Exit 128. So, yeah, so it's just gonna be a mess. Leave work by 4:00 or so, or stay, stay for dinner, right?
You better. Another update, and this goes along with Chief and the PD, and I would like to commend him for that last presentation, that was exceptional. Did set a record for all time, and that was extremely good, but we, we have met with Ms. Connie from Connie's Cover, just to have some discussions regarding some of the issues we are seeing with the homeless in those areas that goes along with what was discussed tonight. And I think she was surprised, because it wasn't a, it wasn't a, anything that the city is attempting to push down anybody's throat, we're just looking at sitting down, having the conversations, seeing how we can all work together to kinda negate some of the negative impacts that we're having. And we did have her talk to a, a property owner that's, that is down in that area. She does understand the issues that are going on. So we're gonna invite her to join us with some of our different departments to sit down and just have open and honest communication about these impacts and see if we can all work together to, to see if we can negate some of these things. So we've started that conversation, and we'll follow up and keep you, keep you in the loop as we move forward. That's all I've got.
Thank you for opening the door, that conversation, I appreciate it, because it's not saying on that, just that side of the freeway.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Troy?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Chief Heber?
Staying with my motif of the new me, nothing for the group tonight. Thank you for your, your support, a really good night tonight. Welcome, and thank you for a warm welcome to Chief Graham, and I'll defer my time to Dan, because Dan will take my time.
I will, I will top your motif with a pamphlet. I left with the council this evening, a pamphlet, educational pamphlet, contains an overview and benefits of public power, which is municipally operated, municipally owned and operated electric systems, of which we are one. Talks about all of that in, in Colorado and gives you a good overview there. It's published by the Colorado Association for Municipal Utilities, of which we are a member and I serve on the board. So I think it's a real easy read overview and gives some really good information, but if you have any questions, if you take a look at it, please let me know. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
And CAMU, CAMU is our legislative branch at the legislature to keep us apprised of what's going on there.
Yes. Yes, they do, as many, they do many, have many functions, but one of their function is to represent us and our electric system at the state legislature, yes. Good point, thank you.
Okay. Kristi?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
John?
Just a reminder that we have our second budget work session this Thursday evening at 6:00. I look forward to seeing you all then.
And, and everybody got their supplemental to the utilities budget?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. IT?
Just real quickly here, we had some audio problems on the YouTube side of the stream this evening. I apologize for that, to the, to our online constituents. I'll work on, see if we can get a cleaned-up version posted out to YouTube tomorrow with as much as we can recover on that. Other than that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, do we have anybody online tonight?
We, most of the folks were on earlier for the presentations. At the time, we lost audio, I think we had two or three people online, and two of them came back, so.
Okay.
My thanks to those folks for sticking with us.
Right, okay, thank you. Ms. Sylvia, City Clerk's office?
Just wanted to mention that, I found out tonight that the sample ballot is available online at the El Paso County Clerk and Recorder's website. And just a heads up, that the last day to register to vote to be able to receive a mail ballot is on Halloween, so please make sure that you register to vote prior to that. That's all I have. Right after that, in October, or, let's see, you get it?
Seventeenth.
I should say seventeen.
Seventeenth.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Twenty-two days.
Right, so even though the bulk of them are mailed on the 17th, you can still go online and register when you realize you didn't get yours, because you moved or whatever?
Correct.
Or you turned 18?
Yes.
Right? And you can, and you still have time to get it in the mail?
Yes.
If not, then you, when the voting places start opening up, of which we have one at our Fountain Library this year, right?
We do.
Again, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then you can go and vote in, in person.
You can go vote in person, receive a ballot in person. If you do register to vote during a, they kinda have voting events, it has to be done 22 days prior to the election, so it takes a little while longer, so just, just, just get out there and do it right away.
Go vote, Colorado. Right? Yep, go vote, Colorado, or you can walk up and do it that day, but make sure you bring all the stuff with you. All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, I've been busy advancing my leadership skills. I just successfully completed the Pikes Peak United Way League program, and I'm so happy to have had this amazing opportunity with amazing people that's doing work in our community. And since we're talking about that, they also, the Pikes Peak United Way had a legislative forum today, and so we missed that because we had council, but I'm sure we can go back online and look at that. I also attended Fostering Hope Luncheon with the chief. We had a great time, and this is a wonderful organization that helps foster children, and they are trying to partner with us here in Fountain, and I think that's a wonderful opportunity. I also attended the YMCA, the 14th Annual Celebration, strengthening the foundation in our, of our community. This was also another awesome event, it was my first time. And to, last but not least, UC Health did a presentation with Colorado Springs City Council, and one of their shout-outs was to our Beacon team. So that was great to know that everybody, you know, the community is recognizing that we are facilitating prevention when it comes to incarceration and getting mental health. And so I just want to say again, thank you for all the work that you're doing with that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Chief Graham, did Chief Joyce get the emergency bags from ESA that were all available to him? I didn't know it, he was kind of a transition when he was going out.
I do not have an answer for that, maybe Chief you do. I have not, Chief Joyce is out this week, I won't even meet him until Monday.
Okay, well, if he didn't, at ESA, you've got a emergency bag full of everything that each vehicle will need, and they're gonna give it to you.
Okay.
And it's got defibrillators, it's got everything.
We'll make sure we get it tracked down, thank you.
Yeah, so if you just contact them, they'll be sure and get that to you.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Estes?
Just want to give a quick shout-out to our new fire chief. Chief Graham, welcome aboard. I think you're gonna do wonderful, we're just looking forward to having you and your family part of our community. Please let any of us know if there's anything we can do to help you feel more at home here. The other one is, with Mayor Thompson and Councilmember Duncan, we attended the CML meeting in Woodland Park, which is always an interesting meeting, because it just, to me, it reiterates every time we get to go to meetings like that, how lucky we are here to have the staff that we have, the PD we have, the FD we have, the budget people that we have, because it's, when you hear the horse horsers of some of these other little, little places, you wonder, it makes our job a heck of a lot easier, so I just greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Kinda like getting kids to go to a third world country to appreciate America, right?
Yep.
Councilmember Corey?
The situation, according to what CDOT told him, was there's something they have to fix with the bridge, they can't have any traffic on it, because traffic is gonna jiggle the bridge one way or the other, and it will not allow the fix to hold, so there is a, a pretty good reason to do that. Secondly, reminder that the transit, our transit people are having a food drive this week. If you are interested in donating non-perishable food, I believe we're giving free rides to people for the 19th. We have a meeting with the school board presentation regarding the electric bus. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Yeah, the CML district meeting was, was really nice, they, they have a golf course. What can I say? Okay, and we got to meet there. All right. I also went to the ribbon-cutting up at the Powers Corridor with the governor up there and another overpass that they've built up there, and so now they're moving down from that Briar Gate Constitution area down to Airport, it'll be where the next construction's gonna start there, so they're continuing to come south on those overpasses and those diamond diverging things that you cross like that, so that was good to see that done. Peterson 20th Anniversary is their stand-up, and I learned a new word, I now know what a plank is. Okay? So you're like in the part of the group that was there when they stood it? Well, I don't know, what are you looking at me like everybody should know what the word plank means, okay? All righty. And then PPACG, we had a long-term care roundtable, that's really, really good, we have some major issues facing our, our state, but especially our county, in terms of the people that are retiring and, and getting older, and the inability of these long-term care facilities to hire staff. And so there's some plans possibly coming down the pike, working on some training and different things coming up. So there's a policy group called, if any of the staff get invited to it, it's called JAWS, don't ask me what it stands for at this moment, but it has to do with some training programs possibly coming up to fill those slots. CML Policy Committee met and made some decisions, and we talked about some of the upcoming potential legislation coming up, and one thing, Troy, we were gonna really need to be on top of, are some CORA changes that are potentially coming, but one additional one they talked about was, there was a court order in a city for Colorado last year where attorney, private attorney-client privileged information between HR and the attorney was forced to be given out through CORA. So it's kind of a groundbreaking thing, so you need to maybe kinda check up on that one and see what's going on there.
Okay, certainly, I have not heard of that one. That one raises a red, raises my eyebrows up, so I'll check on, do some research on that one.
Yeah, so, okay, and, and then I think that we're gonna see a lot of legislation coming down for wildfire mitigation and, and stuff like that, so we might not think that directly affects us, when there is a wildfire such as Wildo Canyon, it did greatly affect us in terms of- it did greatly affect us in terms of the water quality that came down the creek and all the muck and the flooding and, and different things that happened. So that's gonna be really important stuff to, to keep an eye on. And then I know Councilmember Duncan was there also. I don't know if anybody else came after I left to the VFW Halloween birthday party for the young man, Aiden, in our community, and I did catch a video of him online today after surgery, up and walking. So that's great to, to see him up and moving about already. And then Communities That Care, we had a, a big community meeting today and had a, had a really good turnout. And they are gonna be running some hiring positions for that department pretty soon here, so. Anyways, so that's pretty much it, and unless anybody has anything else? Oh, wait, I didn't adjourn, announcement of an executive session we don't have. Okay, now I can adjourn, right?